Well, let's go ahead and get started.
Okay, you're recording.
All right. On my fist, I now call the East Line Zoning Commission regular meeting of May 20th, 2021 to order. It is 7:34 PM. This meeting is being held via video conference on Zoom. Just a quick roll call, which is what we always start with to identify which commissioners are present this evening. I think I can see everybody there. Kim Cage, raise your hand, give us an eye. Looks like we have Norm Peck. All right, we have Ann Thurlow, I see Ann. We have Terry Donovan, I see Terry.
Hi.
And myself, and I know that Denise is here as well. She's our one alternate that's here this evening so far. We have one participating applicant tonight, and that is Todd Sikowski. Is Todd here yet?
Yes, I believe that's the Jenny that's logged in.
Okay, very good, very good. And then staff, Mr. Mahaland is not here. Obviously Jen is here facilitating this meeting. Thank you, Jen. Brooke Stevens, our recording secretary, I see Brooke. Roseanne Hardy, our ex officio, is she?
I don't have Roseanne yet, but she does join us sometimes late as well, so I'll keep my eye open.
All right, so, uh, let's see, I'm just looking at the seating of alternates. Denise is the only one here, so Denise, it looks like you're on tonight. Appreciate it. And actually, it is your, well, let's see, 34, 318, 48. Well, technically, it's not your turn, but you're, you're, you're who we need tonight, so appreciate that. Moving on to the guidelines of the Zoom meeting, just got to read these to everybody and to the audience if there's anyone else out there. Number one, please remember that while unmuted, we can hear you and everything going on around you. We can also see you. Number two, board members and staff will be unmuted during the entire meeting. Three, as required by executive order, everyone must state their name and where they are from prior to speaking. For example, John Smith, board member, or Harry White, 123 Main Street, each time they speak. During public delegations, Jennifer will open the lines for comment. Please wait to be called on to speak. Once you have finished speaking, please mute your microphone or phone. During each agenda item, only the board, staff, and presenters will be unmuted to speak on that particular item. Only one person may speak at a time. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand. Wait to be called upon. Board members will be called upon to provide comment via a roll call. Members in alternates for all motions, in the interest of making sure we have a clear record, please plan on roll call votes. So the public and Brooke, taking minutes for us, can be very clear on the record. Only hosts are permitted to share screens at this time. Any documents to be shared must come through Jen@JLindo@ELTownHall.com. As required by executive order, all documents being discussed or reviewed at the meeting must be or must have been posted on the town website no later than 24 hours prior to this meeting. This entire meeting is automatically recorded by Zoom, and upon the host logging out, the meeting will cease and so will the recording. The meeting cannot continue without the host. With that, we'll move on to public delegations, which is time set aside for members of the public to address the commission regarding items, topics, subjects not appearing on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone from the public here this evening participating that wishes to speak to the commission regarding, regarding items, issues not on tonight's agenda?
I only have one member of the public logged in right now, so I would say if that person wanted to speak, they could unmute themselves. Otherwise, we could move forward.
Okay. With that, we'll move right into the public hearing segment. We have two public hearing items this evening. The first was the application of the East Line Zoning Commission for a text amendment to the East Line Zoning Regulation, Section 25.4.3-1. To add, quote, "Should a public hearing for a special permit be continued, the applicant shall modify or replace the sign and add language announcing the continuance, which shall include the time, date, and location of said hearing," end quote. I'll note the legal ad has been run. All the referral responses are posted on the town website as required under the executive orders. I don't think we need to read those. We do have a zoning official memo we need to read into the record, and I think Terry, if you've got that handy, this would be the appropriate time to read that. Thank you.
I, I do, Mr. Chairman. Dated April 13th, 2021, to the East Line Zoning Commission from Mr. Mahaland regarding the zoning regulation text amendment, Section 25.4.3-1. This is a zoning commission-generated text amendment proposal. The purpose is to provide additional public notice for special permit public hearings that have been continued to another hearing date. Mr. Chairman, you want me to read the whole section or just the addition?
Read, read it.
Okay, sure thing. All right, Section 2533, which includes Section 253.3-1, currently states, 25.3.3 Procedures. The commission shall hold a public hearing on the application in accordance with the Connecticut general statutes. Public notice. In addition to notice of hearing by publication, public notice of application for a special permit shall be made as follows. Posting of sign. At least 15 days prior to any public hearing on a special permit, the applicant shall post a sign on the premises indicated that such action is proposed. The sign shall be of durable material, four foot by four foot in size, and shall be firmly set at least three feet above ground surface and located so as to be clearly visible and legible from the most heavily used adjacent town road or two-lane state highway. When, in the opinion of the commission or its designee, there is not sufficient land area to post the sign, a two-foot by two-foot sign may be posted in a window which is clearly visible and legible from the most heavily used adjacent town road or two-lane state highway. The sign shall contain the following. In black block lettering, not less than three inches in height for a road sign and two inches in height for a window sign on a white background. The sign shall be removed within 10 days of completion of public hearing. Notwithstanding the above section, applicants for annual special permit renewals for restaurant, outdoor dining facilities in CA or CB zones where alcohol is served shall not be required to post an on-premise public notice advertising sign. It is specifically proposed to modify the, quote, "posting of sign," end quote, by adding the following. Excuse me. Should a public hearing for a special permit be continued, the applicant shall modify or replace the sign and add language announcing the continuance, which shall include the time, date, and location of said hearing. It says the zoning commission has scheduled a public hearing for May 20th, 2021. That was from Mr. Mahaland.
Very good. Makes sense to me. Presentation by the commission and questions by the commission. I know, you know, Terry, I think you, in a large part, are the person who generated this. To me, it makes really good common sense. You know, we want public input. We want the public to be informed. At the same time, we want transparency, right? As a commission, we want to be really transparent. We don't want to ever give the impression that anything we do is of any sort of a secretive nature, for lack of a better word. So it, to me, it makes sense. It's a no-brainer, but I don't want to steal the, your thunder. This is something that you thought of, and it was precipitated by a recent application. We don't need to name names, and I'll just, I'll let you just kind of take the ball and run with it.
No, Mr. Chairman and commission members, as you know, this, as Mr. Chairman did point out, that this was my suggestion to have Mr. Mahaland look into this.
Yep.
And he did come up with said language. Because in applications past, there has been applications to where an applicant has postponed the said public hearing. And then, you know, there were public, or excuse me, members of the public who wanted to comment on said application. And then, you know, they never follow up on the next meetings. So I suggested that the commission come up with this text amendment, which, like Matt said, it's basically common sense, so that the public will have a choice if they want to comment on said application to do so. And that's where this all came from.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make a comment.
Yes.
I'm not opposed to this, and I certainly understand the reason for it. Number one, it's kind of an additional burden for an applicant. And especially when we have a meeting that is continued two weeks. For two weeks, which is, we meet every two weeks. So the, the original notice, the sign, is at least 15 days prior to any public hearing.
Right.
So there's no way we can require 15 days. We got, we got to put some kind of time limit on there, or a due date. Which... Okay, so tonight, we postpone a, a public hearing. And postponing it to two, to two weeks. What do we give them? A week? There's got to be some kind of time.
So...
Time requirement.
So in terms of like, the quote-unquote "modified," Norm, what, what are you saying? So like, in other words, modify within a certain timeframe or?
Well, you, you have to have a time, a due date of the, of the sign going on.
Correct, so if we add something like, shall modify within, say, five, three days of said, yeah, I know, I know what you're trying to say, but I'm trying to come up with something right now. I know what you mean.
I mean, you don't want to give them, you know, the night before the, the continued hearing. We got to put some kind of...
So like, something within three days of continuance of said hearing, something like that?
Something like that.
Right, I agree. Mr. Chairman, I understand what he says, and I actually agree with that, because that is true. Because in the way that this is reading right now, it would allow the applicant to put the date up, you know, like basically the day of.
Right.
So if they, um, should public hearing for a special permit be continued, the applicant shall modify or replace the sign within three days of continuation. Something like that, Norm, is that what you mean?
Well, three days is kind of tough. Somebody has to hire somebody to make a sign and then put it up. You may not be able to make it, you know?
Well, the sign, the sign is already made, so really, all you're doing is you're changing the date.
That's true.
So now whether, if they can, you know, like, I've seen the...
You don't know sign guns.
Yeah. I have seen signs that have, you know, like, you know, magic marker written on them, you know, of said, of these said signs.
What about, what about seven days prior to the continued hearing? Give it, give them at lea, at least a week.
So should a public hearing for a special permit be continued by the applicant to modify or replace the sign?
I think that's sufficient.
Within seven days, yeah.
That gives townsfolk who live near the area that might have a vested interest plenty of time, several days to drive by the area, so to speak, or hear about what's going on or that it's been continued. I think that is sufficient time for people to be in the know, so to speak, if they're interested in a particular project and want to weigh in. That's my thought. That's, I think seven days is sufficient. Anyone else want to weigh in?
I agree with that. So how do we add it, Norm, just by, within seven days of continuance?
Yeah, at least seven days prior to the...
The new hearing day.
The new hearing.
The new hearing day.
Yeah.
So is this something then, we want to just, you know, basically postpone for now and then have language written?
Might be a good idea. It might be a good idea, instead of us trying to cut and paste or change it on the fly here. Make sure we get it. That was a good catch, so make sure we get it right.
Yeah. I agree. All right. So... So the question is, do we close the public hearing and just have the language rewritten?
You need to have public comment.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to change, if we're going to change the language, we'll continue the public hearing. Question is, do we entertain? Do, if we have people here that wish to speak publicly about this, and they're here, then certainly we can, we can entertain a speaker or two, or whoever's, whoever's here that wishes to speak. I don't think we have anybody, do we, Tim?
There's just one person as a member of the public, so if they want to speak, they could unmute themselves.
Nope, doesn't look like it.
No.
So with that, unless there's any further comments tonight, I think it's pretty clear what, where we're going with this and what needs to happen. I'll take a motion to continue the public hearing.
So moved, Terrence P.
And do we have a second?
I got it.
Seconded by Ann, I believe, was first. All those in favor signify by saying aye. I'll go around. Aye, Kim, aye, Norm, Terry.
Aye.
Ann and Denise. Okay, so we are going to continue that public hearing. Good job. Moving on to item number two, which is the application of Todd Sadowski for a text amendment to the East Line Zoning Regulation, Section 20.28 and 25.3.3, to allow Tap Room Brewery service in CB zones by way of a special permit. Those are the two important words, by way of a special permit. I'll note the legal ad has been run.
Mr. Chairman?
Yo, you, yep.
Matt, I'm going to recuse myself from application.
Got you. All right, that leaves us with five commission members. George isn't here, right? I don't see George.
No.
Okay. I've just got to go into my email, because I did not print out any of these memos, and I think with Terry gone, I'll be reading them. Unless another commission member has them in front of them and wishes to read, let's see.
Do you want to? I have...
I can, I can pull them off the website, read them off my phone. That's what I plan to do.
I have them up, Terry.
Do you have them?
I have some printed out.
Ann, do you want to, do you want, would you like to read them into the record tonight, since you have them printed out?
Which, which one first?
There's only one. It's just the Tap Room Brewery's memo.
Actually, the only one we're going to read, because the other ones are, are there for public viewing, is the Tap Room Brewery's memo by Bill Mahaland. The zoning official memo.
To Mr. Wa...
This one.
It might be quicker, of town of East Line. You know, it might be quicker for someone to...
Well, I'm looking at it here now. If you genuinely want to move it as I go along, I'll read it.
Yeah, I can't find it in my stack really quickly, sorry.
No problem. Memos to the East Line Zoning Commission from Bill Mahaland regarding the proposed text amendment, Tap Room Brewery Outdoor Service in the CB Zone. The applicant Todd Sikowski, owner of the Niantic Public House Microbrewery, has applied for a text amendment to allow, quote, "outdoor service," end quote, by special permit. It is specifically proposed to add a new section, 20.28, to the general regulations, Section 20. The proposal includes 10 conditions that must be met. These are described in the application. As the commission is aware, presently, the zoning regulations primarily allow outdoor dining only unless a facility is pre-existing. This proposal would allow the consumption of alcohol as an accessory to the brewery in an outdoor patio setting similar to outdoor dining, but not as an accessory to a restaurant. All right. Did we go too far?
Nope, starting with item...
Got it. Item, item F on the proposal states in part, quote, "Provided that food is available during the hour such premises are open," end quote. It also provides language that implies, quote, "outside vendors and/or restaurants located on or near the premises shall be deemed compliance with this requirement," end quote. This language is somewhat vague, particularly the reference to, quote, "outside vendors," end quote. Presently, the town of East Line has an ordinance that prohibits vending on Main Street. Vendors are required to obtain a vending permit from the town. The proposal seems to imply that food vendors would be allowed. The language in this paragraph F should be clarified so that the regulation is clear as to what it does and does not permit. A question is whether food truck vending should be permitted or part of the outdoor brewery experience, or whether food should come from local restaurants. In conclusion, I note that during the pandemic, the governor issued special orders that allow the outdoor patio alcohol consumption along with food truck service, whether permitting. The public house operated with outdoor service without incident, and the operation contributed to the overall village outdoor living experience. It provided a unique setting that supported the diversity of the available food and beverage experience in Niantic. All right, that's it, very good. And then we've got the two motions. So at this point would be the appropriate time to hear our presentation by Mr. Todd Sikowski.
Good evening. So, um, obviously during COVID, there were some executive orders that went into place that allowed us to have a patio. Throughout the summer, it was a huge savior for us. It carried us through, and the most common thing we heard from customers is how much they liked it, and it wasn't going to be permanent. So this application is really just a continuance of what we were already doing. It's a, an addition to what we already have inside. It's bringing people outside where they want to be during the summer. Nice days are always slow for us inside the taproom, because people want to be outside. So that's really what this is all about. And the food truck thing that Bill had mentioned in his memo, we put it in there. We, we weren't sure if it would take precedence over the ordinance that does not allow them. Our thought was, we would put it there so that if we did get permission, I believe you can get permission via first electman application. So if we did have that permission, we could include it. But we can certainly change the wording on that one to clarify that. That's really it. We, most of the language is in line with what the restaurants are allowed to do right now. It's 1,000 square feet is our max. Really just looking, again, to do what we've been doing for the past year.
And the vendor question isn't a question we necessarily need to answer tonight, insofar as you're, you're going to have to apply for a special permit. This is a text amendment at this point, so we're going to, we're going to see a more detailed, right? More speci, more specificity in terms of what you're going to be proposing when that, when that time comes.
Right.
Does that make sense? Okay.
That's great, yep.
All right. Very good. Anything further, Todd, before I take some questions or comments from the commission?
I don't think so, no.
All right, great. Questions from the commission to our applicant, Mr. Sikowski? Anyone? All right. Pretty straightforward. Any public comment? Jen, this would be the appropriate time to see if there's anyone from the public that has any, anything insightful they wish to offer us? No?
I still only have the one member of the public logged in, so I don't believe so.
Okay. All right. Well, if there's no further comment or comment from any commission members, this, again, this looks pretty straightforward to me. I think the big question is with the, right, food, the food truck question, and, you know, where our purview is with that. You mentioned the first selectman could give you authorization. I mean, that's probably the biggest question for me, perhaps the only question for me.
Sure.
And it's, it's one that certainly can be resolved as, as, as we move along here with this. I'll take a motion to close the public hearing if nobody else has anything on this.
Moved.
You have a second? We do. Ann, all those in favor? Aye, that's everybody. Very good, everybody's got their hands up. Moving on to the regular meeting component, and we are going to skip over the first one, since we continue the public hearing on the East Line Zoning Commission's proposed text amendment. Item number two is the application of Todd Sikowski for a text amendment to the East Line Zoning Regulation, Section 20.28, 25.3.3, to allow Tap Room Brewery service in CB zones by way of a special permit. Any, uh, any more discussion of any kind? Any comments from anyone on the commission? I did notice, and I noticed a few moments ago, Mr. Dwyer is with us now, and you've been with us for the past maybe 10 minutes or so through this. Did you?
Do you have an alternate for me?
We, we, we have five. We, we, Mr., Mr. Donovan had to recuse himself, and we have five. He would make six, Mr. Dwyer. I just want to make sure you're up to speed in terms of...
I'm having a problem with the computer here.
Okay, no problem. I have the same problem very often, believe me. You're not alone. You're not alone. Anybody have anything? No?
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, Ann, go ahead.
Oh, hi. I just had a question on the food truck. Are those Niantic businesses, or are they from other towns that bring food trucks in? I'm just asking, because to me, it's a, a business just like another restaurant if it's a Niantic person.
So I guess the hypothetical question is, if a food truck were to be permitted, were it permitted, excuse me, would it be a food truck from an establishment outside of East Line Niantic or within East Line Niantic?
Because to me, it's just like another East Line business if it's from here, but...
Right, right.
And we, we've certainly tried to work with local restaurants. That's always our preference. We want to work with local. During this, we found it was difficult to get people booked, especially local. So we went outside of town. So going forward, there'd probably be some of that as well, but it's, it's all southeastern Connecticut-based anyway. As far as the trucks that we've had up to date.
Yep. And that piece of it is all really to be determined, right?
Sure, sure.
Yep. Okay. Anyone else? You guys have a great business. It's been an awesome addition to the town, and I just want to say that. It's a unique, it's unique. It's kind of tucked, tucked away there, but you know, people have found it, that's for sure.
Oh, yes, they have, yes.
They have definitely, they definitely didn't waste any time finding it, and the word's out, and that's the place for young, young folks. Old folks like me, yeah.
Everybody, you'd be surprised how wide it's...
Right, but it's, it's definitely a young person's establishment. It's a really, really great place, so... Anyone have anything else? If not, I'll take a motion.
Move to close the hearing.
Pass that.
Actually, we're, we're on the regular meeting, so we're, we're, we're taking a motion to either approve or deny this text amendment.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the text amendment as presented.
Thank you, Kim. Do we have a second?
Second that.
Okay, we have a second. Denise Markovitz seconded that. Any final comment or discussion? Seeing none? I'll go around, take a roll call. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Aye. Ann Thurlow?
Aye.
Norm Peck?
Aye.
Yep, Kim, of course, aye. And Denise was aye, and I'm aye. So the vote carries 6, 0, 0. Congratulations, Mr. Sikowski. You're certainly a step closer, and congratulations, and all the best to you and your business.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate you, thank you.
Cheers.
Moving on to the approval of minutes of the April 8th, 2021 meeting. We'll, we'll need a motion for that.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I'd like to sit again, so now what? We have to sit Denise, right? Now that Bill's here?
Yes, we do.
Thank you, Denise.
So we've got a full commission. Thank you, Denise, very much.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented for the April 8th meeting.
Very good, thanks, Terry.
Second.
We have a second. Mr. Dwyer?
Second.
And I don't know. Does anyone have those notes? I think I missed that meeting.
You did.
You did.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye. I'm going to abstain, obviously. Kim, aye, Norm is aye, Terry, hand up, aye.
Aye.
Ann is aye. Bill Dwyer is aye, so it's a 5, 0, 1. All right, took care of that. Which moves us on to old business and new business. We've got none, believe it or not. And we don't have Mr. Mahaland here to fill us in on any of that.
No, but Mr. Chairman, if you're... No, but Mr. Chairman, if you remember, a couple of meetings ago, we set up a subcommittee of Denise, myself, and George to go over the C.A. regulations there. I have been in touch with Mr. Mulholland, and you know, due to his situation there, we are going to meet sooner or later. But we just want everybody to be healthy and
Definitely.
Today, so it will happen, Denise, so.
Okay.
And commission members, yeah.
Excellent, excellent.
Yeah.
Excellent. We're going to skip over the zoning official. Bill took the night off. Good for him. Comments from Ex officio. I don't think Roseanne is with us. Is she not? She is not. Comments from zoning board liaison to planning. The May eleventh meeting, Ann?
They just voted to affirm the two text amendments that came up tonight.
Okay.
Oh, sorry about that. And then there was a special meeting beforehand. I think Norm was at that, so he would know better than myself what happened there.
Okay.
You want to know something?
Wait, was there anything, was there anything pertinent from that special meeting that is worth filling us in on?
The plan of development, Conservation and Development Committee is going, is meeting every other month. This is not, has, I don't believe this has been done before. And the reason for this, this will continue on. They want to monitor, discuss, and promote the recommendations of the plan. So won't be every month, but every other month. I think it's not a bad idea to, as, as a follow-up.
Good stuff.
I think that's the only significant issue that I observed.
Okay. Thank you. Comments from chairman? I don't really have anything other than to say I'm glad we're, we're moving faster and faster to the other side of COVID, and we'll be meeting in person, it looks like, in June. The June third meeting, is it June third? I don't have a calendar in front of me, June third meeting. And we can get back to, for lack of a better word, some...
I guess I got to take a class, right?
Yeah, we got, we...
Also means I get my Thursday nights back. Thank you all.
That's right, that's right. But email me, Jen and Terry. We, we got to make sure we have that, all, all that technical stuff squared away before the next meeting. And I think everybody will be happy to meet again in person, and it'll feel more normal. These meetings have not been, I think I've said it on the record more than once, it's not my favorite forum, but nothing like seeing people in person, seeing applicants at the podium before us. It's just a better, better format. That's the way it was intended to be, so with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
So moved. Terrence P.
Terrence P. And we have a second?
Second.
We do. It's Ann Thurlo. All those in favor, raise your hands, say aye.
Aye.
Good meeting, everybody.
Hello, Nicole.
Have a great night.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night.